Oh, me, or you? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'll just apologize if my voice isn't the best today, so I'll try to do my best I can. Trying to fight over that losing my voice a lot these days. Okay. Approval of minutes for previous. Your friend? We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. Approval of the bills, and we have additional bills on our desk. Look like everything was fairly ordinary. We have a motion in a second to approve the bills. You want to include the highway bills as well?
Yes.
Okay. Highway bills included, okay, Jeff? Okay. Further discussion. Roll call please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lake Hart?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports. Are we all ready, Candy?
We're good.
I don't think they're doing any good for you here.
Yeah.
We'll do a group. Aye.
We have a motion in a second to approve the financial reports. Further discussion. We have no further discussion, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Our time.
Aye. Motion carries. Here's our checks. Move through. The motion approved, we have a second. We have a second. Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take another one please.
Britt?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lake Hart?
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. The only thing I was gonna make a note of is tabled the discussion on lake access. Could we put it back under old business? Be sure to disable to the next meeting? Other than that, I see nothing to change.
Who to approve with the change question?
Okay, second. The motion is second to approve the change as mentioned. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries, need to accept. Stacy, good morning.
Good morning. Had a wonderful week of vacation. And got sunburned and all that good stuff. Even with a week gone for the month, I had eighty-one veterans the first few weeks of the month. And I have to meet one yesterday on the road during road construction, saw the rug. So I got another gentleman coming in later this month for help, so. We find veterans everywhere we can. One thing I recommend, don't drive in Vegas.
The taxis are poor.
Well, we had a rental. I did my best to get the hell off the road.
Just take Uber next time, you'll be fine.
Anybody have any questions for Stacy? Glad you were in the issue. Okay, thanks Stacy. Thank you. Bill, you just saunter in.
Yeah, morning. Morning. I'm gonna be short this week, I don't know if you've heard or not, but Extension Director Bob Boom is gonna retire April or July 1st. So we'll be looking for a new leader in Extension. Comes, sounds like January to put in an intern. And look for a replacement starting January. Other than that, just the normal things. If you haven't looked, make sure you check the MDA stations, wanna carry, wanna get more. It's a good, that's for everybody in the room here. It's a good weather resource, tells you twenty-degree days and cell temperatures and all that stuff. Just Google MDAWN and they'll bring it up for you. We'll give it a check. Other than that, do you have some questions?
Mois has a sweater pump at Curry yesterday. Ever got to work?
Yeah.
Pretty out of spot. Okay. I'm joking.
Have a good day.
Thank you. I should have made mention of Bill leaving here. I'm gonna say in the report, just a thank you to the Extension Service because they had pizza days last week and we ran a vote. Oh gosh, we had a good get through. So it was a pretty good event again. Collaborative effort, always works really well, so. I get the fun part, I get to help make pizza based with them if they're done, so. Kristin?
Good morning.
Morning.
A few things that I want to make mention of. We are the northeast region of the state. It's currently in planning stages of doing a regional hazmat exercise. And I've talked to Devil's Lake City Fire and I'm going to talk to our other fire departments in our county, as well as Grant Forks Fire and all of the smaller volunteer fire departments in between to do a regional exercise in Lakota. So the planning process will be through the month of May and then hopefully be a full-scale part of the exercise to be in June, but the date is to be determined. I was just approved for a grant with, I don't know the amount yet, they have not said, for the purpose of active shooter training and courthouse security. So I'm gonna pull the Surveillance Committee back together to come up with project ideas for that. I don't know for sure, because I know a couple of years ago we did update all the cameras and we did the door locks and, I mean, we're sitting pretty well right now. But maybe there's something other brands can think of other than my own or different projects to do. On that note, I also did talk to the police of, or the Chief of Police here in Devil's Lake. And I asked him if any of his officers would like to go to specific active shooter training. He said one actually just came back from doing some federal training and that officer can come do training for our employees here. And it's something that I would like to make mandatory for all of our employees to partake in with your agreeance. Just because it's the thing, it's the hot topic. It's, it happens all over. You know, I know we have a more likely chance of getting, you know, in a car accident on our way to work with our morning commutes, but it's a prevalent thing, you know. So I'd like to see that.
How long of a training program is it?
That I don't have all the details on. I'm assuming we could probably do like, you know, a two-hour session in the morning and one in the afternoon, a two-hour session in the afternoon. It wouldn't be an all-day thing. It's something that they could probably condense for us. That way we just kinda get the basics and the feel for it.
And is the training once per year then?
I can ask.
And that's an active shooter?
Yes.
Yeah, just.
Paula, didn't Chamber do a copy and collaborate?
Yes, she did. Yes, we did do one in March.
Officer Neratata wasn't?
Yes. It was very well attended.
Train Andy of the college is doing that as well.
Okay.
Whether they can customize it to fit your workplace schedule.
Your, yeah.
Yeah.
And Chief Kinowski, he's been really good to work with and I've been talking to him for some time now in regards to this. And we did do a drill here at the courthouse five weeks ago or so. I mean, it really showed us, you know, with our active shooter protocols that we have here for the county, it showed us our downfalls and it showed us, you know, where the gaps were. And that's the point of drilling and that's, you know, just like we do for tornado drills or anything like that, fire drills. It just kinda shows you where your shortcomings are so we can make it better for the next time, so. And of course, the plan is just that, it's just a basic. It's not going to engage every what-if or possible scenario, but it's a starting point of where to go. So, is that something we could make mandatory for our employees?
I'm in favor of it.
I don't have a problem with it, I think we should get some more details on just length and time.
Definitely.
Who's gonna get the training and everything, but I.
It's check ingate, officer ingate is who will do it. But definitely, I'll bring those details to you. Not the number, however you want them. Most definitely, but it would be something I'd like to see. Also, this week is severe summer weather awareness week. So that means on Wednesday about eleven, eleven fifteen, you're gonna hear all those lovely sirens go. And they're going to do the nuclear test, the bomb test, the tornado test, all the different sirens on. And it'll be here in every community in Ramsey County that has sirens in their community. And it will last for probably, I don't know, seven to eight minutes to run through all those tones. And then on Thursday evening, if anybody's interested, there is a skyborne class at six PM at City Fire and it's free and open to public. So on that's been advertised, there's coffee times going this week. I did with Eric a couple of weeks ago, we recorded, so. And I will be gone at the end of the month for about six days, the 24th through the 30th. Or I'll be back the 30th, so just so you know, have heads up on that. That's what I have.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions for Kristin?
But Defensive Driving Program with Mark Beerkey?
Yes.
Very good.
Good. I did get some good feedback on that and I do every time he comes up.
He did say that he would be willing to come out and do it for county employees and their families.
Oh, perfect.
If we'd like to schedule something and he said we don't have to wait for a few years to do that.
Perfect.
If we can keep our families safe, whether it be our kids or our spouses or whoever.
Absolutely, I agree.
If you wanna talk to him maybe and, because he loves coming up to Fish Devil's Lake.
There's always draws here.
Always said it's not too hard to get him up here in the summertime, so.
Well, I can have it on my own schedule, that's not a problem. Mark's great to work with.
Yeah. And he'd be willing to do it too again like he did for the employees and he would suggest maybe a, you know, since it is a longer course, you know, we have to start around six and, you know, it ends up going around ten o'clock.
Yeah. It's about four.
But then we could, you know, keep our families safe and make sure that they're on roads and, you know, save our employees some money on insurance discounting.
Sounds great, I'll get ahold of Mark.
Thank you.
No problem. Anything else for me?
No.
If not, I am going to go down and turn my little heater on, wordsworth.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, good morning.
Good morning. I'm headed out to Watford City in June for the Recorders Convention. And as you know, out in the west, the state rates are a little bit higher than normal. They're, they were one-ten-seventy when I booked it, so I was just coming in to get that approved so I can attend my convention.
So move second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the one-ten-seventy, aye.
You get the presidential suite then, yeah?
No.
It's a mainstay suite, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So yeah, thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Just moving along here. Kevin?
Morning. All right, first off, every two years we have a responsibility reporting, reporting how many miles our township has in their township and we have got those tallied now, so just either motion for the chairman, we assign that and send it to the state.
So, second.
We have a motion in a second to allow the chairman to sign the road reporting, the miles reporting, but I can, further discussion.
What question, Jim?
Yes.
Is there increases in miles in townships?
Um, generally, no, I can't think of any this year. They are somewhat depleted already, so. They, they report the dirt trails and everything that aren't being maintained, so.
It's not just township roads that are being, it's all surfaces, right?
The guideline is anything that's drained, improved, so if there's any kind of a ditch or debris structure, they can come, whether it's being played or not.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to send the lava, show them some further discussion. Seeing none, okay, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Polar Communications is asking permission, you know, right away, on Ramsey Six, to vary a fiber optic in the north ditch, five miles east of south of them. And they're gonna be hiring Northwest Communications out of our shop there to bore it under the slew areas. It's gonna be way out of our way, it's gonna be deep enough to stay out of our way and it's gonna be actually under the water, so I didn't see any problems with it.
How deep do they put it?
Depends on the slew, but probably six feet below our road top, top of our road. I would say four feet below the ditch.
Three, four feet. Need motion to that?
Yep.
Move through.
Okay, okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the right-of-way request.
And they stay out on the outer fringes of the ditch yet or they're not going down the middle of it, are they?
No, they'll be, I would say, right at the bottom. They won't be up on the in slope.
They don't mark it, do they?
Uh, no, unless we ask them to. I mean, if we, if somebody asks up there to dig, then they'll mark it, but they don't put a post up and say here, then it must be asked them to.
Okay. So is this gonna be, how many miles of road is this gonna run along then?
One mile. There's two slews in the one mile.
Okay. I mean, I guess from the signage question, I don't know if it would be a bad idea to maybe see if they could stick a couple signs in there, so you know.
Sure.
You never know, somebody, somebody should be taking three feet out with a ditch.
Is there more land on that ditch? You probably don't know, huh?
More land?
Of more lines?
Uh, on the north side? I don't know. I would doubt it out in that area because it's loose country. I mean, it's pretty desert out there out there, so.
Okay.
I think it's to serve that missile base, the Ground Zero Missile Base out there. Somebody bought that and wants to try ground to cable up there now. If you come.
Interesting.
Oh, yeah.
I could not have known that, but.
Yeah, somebody bought it.
It's like an old RSL site, I think.
Yeah, it's one of them base stations, Ground Zero, as they call them, where they kept all the people.
Hunting shaft.
Probably.
Need your paper? Oh, mate. I'm looking for a designer, stoner, switch treatment on site, on whatever.
Interesting. They were able to stay beyond our right-of-way most of the way, but there's these two slew areas that they need to come in and dip around the side of.
Where are you from, Paul, you know?
He comes from Hawaii.
Hawaii?
That's what he said. I could be wrong, though.
Where is the hospital, then, you're right now? Going the wrong direction.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve right-of-way, the right-of-way, but further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
And also there's a second Northeast Regional Water District is asking permission to put a line underneath Ramsey County Nine. Let's see, that's... Just east of three. And they're just, they're gonna be boring. They're trying to tie everybody together, they're just a circle person, but. They'll be boring underneath our main line and then putting a thicker wall of color, or a thicker wall of pipe.
They're gonna case it like?
Yeah, it won't really be cased, but it'll be thicker than everything else.
Oh, okay, so they're just gonna upgrade the pipe thickness underneath.
Definitely.
Okay.
And that's on Ramsey Nine.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the right-of-way request for the Regional Water District. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Okay, then our two subcontractors are here. We're not using them yet, but they are here, so. Also, we have a motion for the chairman and the option to sign the last two summer maintenance contracts for fresh water and pot for girls and that would be all of them now.
Move through.
Second. We have a motion in a second to allow the chairman to argue the sign the remaining summer maintenance contracts. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. So that's all you got? My goodness. All right, thank you, Cap. Okay. Old business, Lake Access Equipment. We have some members of the Lake Access Committee here, as well as Suzie and Paula from the Chamber of Tourism. I guess I'll start the discussion by saying, you know, hopefully we can have a quality discussion and come to a conclusion here. I guess from the commission's standpoint, we tabled it at the last meeting with the intent that I talk with Suzie and Paula and try to come to some type of resolution with the intent of, we all want to stay on the committee. Visited extensively with multiple people. Learned quite a bit. From the commission's standpoint, with wanting Mark, wanted to stay on, with that being his intent, with the commission's intent at that point in time that he wanted to stay on. And then I don't know if this'll work for you guys or not, but I floated the idea to Suzie and Paula last week. The best, it seems to me that there's a, just a communication breakdown. The best thing I think we can do, at least in my opinion, to allow everything to kind of flow a little more easily is set meeting dates. And then if there's set meeting dates, then you'll know when the meetings are, you'll know when the times are, you'll know when they're gonna be. They can continue to email the documents to you as well as Candy. And then if you wanna pick them up from Candy, then that way you'll know exactly when the dates and the times and everything is gonna work. If that would work for everybody out there. And I'm just throwing it out, that's just the beginning of my discussion. Doesn't mean that has to be the solution.
I guess I would like to have it said that I was under the direction of a committee.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Oh, that's okay, I wanted to remind you that that was something we were gonna work on.
Yeah, and I guess I should clarify by saying the discussion being had wasn't started by Paula, it wasn't started by Suzie. This was the direction of the Lake Access Committee members. They brought the concerns of the members to Candy as well as myself to state what was, you know, that there is a disconnect in the communication and there was something that needed to be worked on. So it wasn't, it wasn't from either of them, it was from, and they have meeting minutes that I've read that say specifically that the committee members were asking for trying to iron out the situation essentially, so.
Thank you. So with that said, I think moving forward, if we would like to, as we discussed in our meeting, Adam, but if we wanna try with the calendar dates, if that's agreed upon with the committee, because as I stated, it's a committee decision, not based on just what we would love. But, and I understand that as far as dates go, as we do with our meetings, with Suzie and I do with our meetings, we have a calendar set, you know, every third Monday or every third Tuesday or whatever, we know that those are the meetings that we're going to have. Obviously with Lake Access, it's a little different. We don't pull meetings together continuously, it's kind of on an as-needed basis. But I guess we can set the dates and then cancel them if, if they aren't needed, if that's agreeable with the committee.
Yeah, I think we could bring that to them. We'll have to call a meeting and formalize it.
Yeah, and like we talked about previously, I think, I don't know if it's gonna be a perfect solution, but in, I'm sure looking at past years, you can see when you've kind of, the flow of the business has occurred.
Sure.
And, you know, we meet the first part of March and then we let, you know, we advertise for bids and then we meet the first part of April, you know, and then you can kind of figure, well, our six meetings kind of fall in these timeframes and set the third Thursday of the month at nine o'clock or whatever.
Right.
You know, just set that time and hit them in those spots and go from there.
I just have a question for the county commissioners. Are all of you people required to have email addresses? I serve on two boards right now and that's how we get our correspondence. One's out at Garrison and one's in town here. And we correspond frequently about meetings or other issues that are coming up. And I don't know if everybody has an email address and if you don't, I think it's a good idea because that way you're in direct contact with everybody immediately. I checked mine twice a day, I don't know.
And to be, to answer your question directly, there's no formal requirement to have an email address?
Should there be?
It is a great way to communicate.
I mean, I can't say if, I guess, I mean, I've been.
I think that's something for you guys to consider, whether you require all your county commissioners to have an email address because that way it's easy contact, easy access.
I guess that comes down to the, you know, the question of if you require somebody to do something, then, yep, you know, are they gonna check and do?
Well, if you're holding a public office, you should be. It's my opinion anyway. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
So getting back to that date, I think we will bring that to the committee then at our next meeting and get back to you, to you as a board, to let you know then.
Are there any feelings from board level up here? Is that agreeable? At least in force of action at this point?
To me, any solution that solves the issue is a solution, right? It doesn't really matter what the details of that solution are.
Yeah. Yeah, and I got to this thought process because I was... Partially, number one, I think it's just easier to appoint when we lock in meeting dates, you know? I guess I remember that because I always know when to use the hearing here.
So then how long, oh, Suzie.
Oh, wait.
Then how long do we go, you know, say we set the calendar dates then and there's still absentees after that? Is it still?
Well, just stay in contact.
Okay, then we just stay in contact with you? I mean, you know, on my, in our guidelines at the chamber, we allow like three absentees before we contact the board member and say at this point, you know, do you wanna reconsider? And obviously very night, I mean, it's like, do we wanna reconsider possibly because, you know, your job schedule is too, you know, full?
Well, in all honesty, part of the nature of setting a meeting date is also if you know you're gonna have a conflict on that date a week out.
Right.
You can easily make contact with somebody else and say, can you attend the meeting for me? Whereas if it's a couple of days' notice, sometimes that gets really difficult. Depending on, you know, how everybody else's schedules are because we're all sitting in meetings constantly, so.
And these are volunteers, I understand that. So when you sit on a board, you know, it's a volunteer position, you have full-time jobs, you're busy, so we understand those situations. So if you make, if you miss three meetings in a row, you've lost contact with what that board or committee is trying to fulfill. That's my thought towards it.
I agree with you. Yeah, I think we all agree. And when we discussed it at the last meeting, it wasn't that we weren't receptive to that. We absolutely thought that. Our concern, I think, or at least my concern, was if, if we remove commissioners that have been appointed to boards to be the representatives of the county commissioner at the behest of that board, that really undermines the authority of that person to speak on behalf of that thing, right? Because if they decide to challenge whatever the will of that board is or to represent the county in a way that that board doesn't like and then the board comes to the commission and says, we don't want this guy, you know, taken off. We were just concerned about the precedent that was set to just pull a commissioner off without having sought some kind of a resolution that was workable. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying as well and having nothing to do with any one of the commissioners that are sitting here right now. It could be anyone in the years past, I, it doesn't matter to me. What matters is that the job's getting done on the committee. That's what matters.
That's our concern also.
Okay.
But if there's a lack of communication between the commission and the boards on meeting dates, well then, we have to fix that.
Exactly.
We have to fix that.
So if we set.
But is there a particular day that you guys kind of meet? Like the first Monday or the second Monday or you just kind of jump around?
Well, as we said, it basically has to do with what needs to get done.
Okay.
So, um.
Hit on the commission and I've, this is my eighth year, but, uh, first week of the month, we have our regular meeting. Then the other board meetings we have. The second week of the month, kind of free for us. The third week of the month, my God, I met a meeting every day, you know, sometimes choose, you know, and we talk about donating time, I mean, the commissioners donate a lot of time.
Exactly.
I've donated a lot of time over my years. I mean, we get a stipend, but it's surely not enough to cover all the time. And the fourth week of the month is kind of a week off, second and fourth are kind of off. So I would suggest try to put it in there one in three weeks of the month somewhere. And that kind of fits my schedule. So I kind of just, I know the third week of the month of that meeting is just about every day.
Yeah, it, it depends on each commi, on each commission, on our each board too, cause yeah, I've, I, basically the only, the only, the fourth, the only, the fourth week of the month basically is the one I kind of have some time off.
We all take, we need to, we're probably not fond of, but we try to get to them.
In all honesty, I'm, I, we're really willing to work with any of the committee members who have conflicts. And we've been doing that, which is why they haven't necessarily been set. Because, um, with changeover with city commission or county commission, everybody's schedules are different. It just needs to be communicated to us. If, if it's not communicated to me when we're setting dates, I, I have no idea what works for who, so.
Would it be okay to get, uh, CC'd on those emails? I mean, I, I guess I'd like that on, on just about every board that we, the, the county represents. Because as we continue on throughout the years, there may be changes, we may switch up committee appointments. And if we don't know a lot about what that committee's been meeting on or have, have an opportunity to know, well, then it's just as well as if you stayed in the committee that you're on. But I don't think that's always been the case, we've always kind of rotated around and, and, uh, what, either particular piqued our interest or, um, fit our schedules or different things like that. But it's also nice to rotate around so you have, um, new representation on there as well, so. If, if, if you wouldn't mind copying me on those, whether or not the other commissioners want that, that'd be up to them, but, you know, I guess I would like to be informed on, on all the committees that, that we look at is.
And that's not a horrible idea anyway, cause you can, you can at least glass the meeting and ask Suzie what happened at the last meeting and what they're gonna talk about for the next meeting. Just you have, I mean, yeah, cause I get CC'd on stuff that I used to be on, then I roll into something else and it's nice just to see what's going on still.
Well, and, you know, otherwise you're at the mercy of whoever represents that portfolio remembering to bring it up.
Yep.
At, at that mission, you know, it's just, yeah, I think that, I think that's a really good.
Well, either that or if you can't make a meeting, make, uh.
To let people, and we need to work on that as a commission, that kind of cross-communication where we say, hey, can anybody take this?
And need somebody to attend, will they, and I can look back and, and see what's, they discussed what's coming up in the next meeting or, or what have you.
So that, um, brings me to ask, what, what does work for you, Mark?
Notification, basically.
No, I mean, what dates work for you, Mark?
Any date. I mean, but, but like, like Ed said, you know, we're, we're very busy the second and the, the first and the third after, you know, I, I'm self-employed, I can basically leave anytime. I, I need to go to a meeting and, and I, and I normally do. I just need to be notified. That's all I need.
Well, what Ed mentioned to us was with his portfolio, he had conflicts and he stated them.
Yeah, and, and those are similar. Every, all the commissioners are basically the same.
First and third are all.
First and thirds are all.
They're busy with all.
They're busy, yeah.
Seems like Thursdays seem to be better, even on first and thirds though, cause Thursdays for some reason don't get ate up as much.
No, they don't.
Mondays and Tuesdays seem to be really full of meetings always. And Thursdays are usually a pretty decent day if you wanna fit something in.
Like I said, in my mind, first and third weeks of the month are a lot of common mistakes. Second and fourth weeks of the month are kind of my own business, you know, so I.
You're only getting fifty percent of your time.
Yeah. I go to meetings the second of the fourth and I go to whatever's, yeah, you have in the evening, you know, but, you get your minds all pretty conglomerated with all the meetings and, and most of them, a lot of them last two hours at T-Mike or more, you know? But, uh, I'm not complaining about that at all, I know, I know what I got into, so.
And just to, to add to all of this, uh, if this communication affects, if we find a, a method of communication and that solves a problem, great, that's, that's wonderful. If it doesn't solve the problem, or any of the problems that any of this is, then we will find a solution that does. So.
We'll keep working it.
Well, I believe this is gonna, gonna fix the problem, I have no doubt. I'm just not a big email person yet, Bob, I do have an email address. I don't check it, I don't go on it, I, I just don't use it. I use telephone. If we're gonna have a meeting at three o'clock today, all somebody would have to do is leave a message on an answering machine and I will be there at three o'clock today. I'm in and out, so I can't even always answer my phone. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a great message taker, I will, I will be there. I, I pride myself in going to all the meetings and boards that I sit on. I just asked once for a phone call and never really got a response.
Yeah, and, and sometimes it's just, you know, different people communicate in different ways.
Yep, yep.
And that's understandable. Uh, and I'm, you know, and I've got the opposite, you know? I, I'd much prefer a text or an email to tell me what's happening, just because to me it's quicker. And I forget to call people back, cause I get busy doing something else and I do not multitask well. So there's many times even somebody like Kevin will text me and I need to text him back and I'll read it real quick while I'm doing something, I go, two hours later, all crap, I was supposed to text him back, you know? So, uh, you know, everybody tuning in gets a little differently, so that's why I, I'm hoping by setting dates, having it, but, you know, it will, it'll open that flow of communication, it'll, it'll, it'll hopefully be constructive and we'll see if it works. But take it to your board as a whole, uh, at the next meeting here and, and we'll see if, if that'll shake out okay. And then we can work on from there. And I'll be in communication with, with you guys as always.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, just a big thank you for, number one, the Home World Committee work you've done for us, uh, both of you, as well as everything you've done with tourism and chamber. It's, uh, from the former Devil's Lake angle, from my outside portfolio for taking on the mini grant as well as the facade. I think that's gonna fit really well from the chamber aspect. And tourism is always doing a fantastic job out there, so I appreciate all the work you guys have done.
Thanks for helping with this and we'll forward and see you, Uncle.
Okay, and that's, right then, thank you. Moving on then, I guess. New business. Ender, notice of the annual meeting, you gonna want us to send somebody and develop the article for?
You sent me last week, so I'll not edit.
When I called, I said.
Would you go?
I did, but you guys voted for me to go, and I.
How was it?
Boring.
How was it?
Boring for me. Actually, what I was amazed about was, was listening to them last year. It might actually be fairly interesting to go this year because last year, I, I strongly had the impression that they were trying to paint a rosy picture of a very bad situation. And I'd be curious to see if they resolved it, I mean, the numbers that they were presenting were a little, little, little scary. So.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So, I, I don't think, it won't be as news fast, you know? You go and ask some tough questions, it's not a hard call, that'd be a fun place to do it.
Who is all good?
Not on May seventeen.
Okay, Candy, you wanna vote? We're gonna thank somebody.
Candy's sitting here going, no, not really.
They are.
Not three weeks out from, from the friendly, yeah?
Well, we can, we can send in our.
Board.
Hope.
Well, what are we voting for?
Uh, board members.
Just board members? Well, there's only, there's only one running for each position, correct? So it's not like it's a test of years. Unless we wanna write somebody in and start making some calls. And it looks like, do we get to vote in every category or just counties category? Cause I, I don't know Scott Radnick personally, but he seems like he's a good guy. Yeah. I've seen, uh, you know, he's very involved in Association Counties, Scott.
He goes to the, he goes to the chairs on association.
Seems to be on top of things. Plus he's a naglander, you can't go wrong to that.
The way it looks, it, it looks like we just voted for the county guy.
Okay.
And there's only one person running? Okay, hopefully Candy, I, I'd move to give you authorization to vote for anybody's name you see on the sheet.
We have a motion, let Candy fill out the pending and the vote for Scotty. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Pretty good discussion. The minutes are sitting there too, if everybody wants to read the minutes from last year's meeting. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of vote for saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and Candy will have to sign that. Or does it just have to be filled out, sent in?
Um, it says authorized representation, so.
Uh-huh.
Authorized representation, maybe?
You're on. One last thing to sign.
I can do that.
Approval of a homestead credit abatement for 2016. A motion to approve a second, just, uh, for the homestead credit abatement. It's pretty good discussion. Seeing none or in favor of vote by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Uh, approval of muskrat permits, there's a list on your desk.
Move to approve.
A motion to a second to approve muskrat permits.
That's changed a little bit. In the past, excuse me, we used to just sign up whoever wanted to shoot them. Now, apparently those lists got to be too big, other, even fish, so they're limited to certain people, or a certain number of people. So we can't just give them to anybody anymore, basically, to our player.
It decided the county was too trigger happy, huh?
Yeah.
And you have to submit the list.
So how do you make the determination of the twelve, like the hundred people showing up?
Yeah, it's a people that sign up the most, yep, exactly.
First come, first served basis to get on the list to shoot some scraps, huh?
Didn't know how else to do it.
Yeah, lots of them.
At one time we had like thirty, you know, back when the muskrats were really, really bad.
And you, you handled this, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that's right, right. Okay, that's why you're first on the list. The sheets back. Okay, did we have, we had a motion, did we have a second? Sorry, I had a motion and we had a second. Pretty good discussion. Seeing none or in favor of vote by saying aye?
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and you're asking. Visitors and delegations. Great. Reporting on portfolios, who wants to start today?
I guess I can start. You know, I talked to Sheriff Nelson, um, busy over there. You know, they had a, a meeting, Lucas had it on with Judge Foley on the, on the twenty-four seven project, uh, this cram. You know, it's, uh, it's kind of supposed to be a, a known at, you know, we're supposed to charge what the product costs or whatever, and it's supposed to be an administrative cost, but we have some delinquent, um, people that are paying, from my understanding.
Basically, yeah, do you, do you mind if I just quickly fill in? Um, so basically the issue was, uh, the, the sheriff's deputies and the sheriff and, and the treasurer noticed that we had lots of people who were on this scram bracelet who weren't paying the fees for it. Now, the scram bracelet is not something that's required. It's actually to be a convenience that's paid for by the people who choose to use it. Otherwise they have to go in, uh, to the, to the LEC and get tested twice a day. So, so it's a little bit more invasive. If they have a scram bracelet, they have to come in and it gets the data off of it, it gets uploaded once per week. And so, the judge was of the opinion that, uh, in cases where they're sufficiently delinquent on payments for the scram bracelet or if they don't report in at least once per week to upload, uh, then, then a warrant will be issued for their arrest. And then.
Do we give you something?
And then, and then the privilege of having a scram bracelet will be basically removed and then they'll be on the.
Yeah, ba- basically the one's gonna be to bring them and take the scram off and say, you don't, you don't get to use this anymore.
Right.
And that's reasonable.
Uh, that was, that was essentially what was, what was decided and, and all parties involved seemed to think that that was very reasonable.
Yeah, and, uh, just that, not to piggyback on the comments, I was visiting with one of the deputies, I think there's two deputies, correct, to that?
There are.
Kind of run the scram program and, and the one deputy sitting there, she, she spent an inordinate amount of time essentially chasing down the people that aren't paying.
Right.
And some people get in arrears quite a ways, so hopefully this will be a solution to fix that, so people don't get in arrears.
And the, the only, uh, the only part of the discussion that I contributed to in any meaningful way was they, there was, there was talk of whether or not, if you were delinquent at all, that you were liable for a warrant or what the threshold was, uh, for that. And I made the comment that I didn't think that it was valuable to add a threshold, because then people would just treat like that, like that was zero. So in other words, if I'm, if, if they're not gonna arrest me until I'm five hundred dollars behind, then fine, if I'm four hundred dollars behind, I don't have to worry about it. Right? So that was my only, that was my only comment, and so they decided not to go that direction, but it was, it was an interesting meeting.
Instead you get to be arbitrarily appreciative.
That's right, as much as possible.
Yeah, it's in, yeah, it's, it's a problem, but hopefully we can get it back to normal, so.
Well, it, it was kind of designed to keep people out of county jails. You know, a lot cheaper to, you know, for the five dollar fee versus the seventy-five dollar fee.
One, and they're, and they're paying the five dollar fee.
And they're supposed to pay the five dollar fee, correct?
And, and the only thing we're paying is the, we pay the fifty dollar connect or disconnect, right? They have to straighten the.
I, I think they're supposed to.
Do they pay it as well? Okay, I couldn't remember if it was us or them that paid the, you know, straight.
The only thing that I found really interesting is, uh, per the guidelines of the program, I don't think that on that conviction, cause it's a second DUI offense. They, they cannot spend more than thirty days in jail. And so I don't think that this was resolved, but it was sort of an interesting discussion between the, the sheriff and the deputies and the judge, was what happens if we keep bringing these people in for non-compliance and they reach thirty days in jail? Then what do we do? And the judge said, then the recourse is to basically hold them in contempt of court and bring them in for that instead.
Yeah, and, and that's the problem, see, you get into this, you get in this cyclical problem where you're gonna bring people in cause they owe you money, and then you're gonna set them someplace where they can't work, so then they can't pay you back. And you just can't win. You're just constantly rolling around, so it's, it's a tough situation. It's, it's, it's interesting how a lot of these, and I, I don't know all the technology, but in the conference, uh, I went to for the Association Counties, on, uh, alternatives to incarceration, there's a lot of new technology out there where they can do, uh, I don't know how it works, but there's, it sounded like there's bracelets now that you can wear, kind of like a scram, but you don't even have to come in to download the data. It's, it all GPS links through.
It's like Fitbit, basically.
Yeah, it's like a Fitbit, basically, but so they can do drugs, alcohol, they can do all the testing. So they're, they're trying to do as many things possible to keep non-violent people out of the jail walls and continue in society and get them the help they need, cause they more than likely have an addiction problem. They're not violent. And keep them out for seventy-five bucks a day and hopefully keep them working in society so we can help them actually fix their problem instead of make an additional problem of, you know, jail time.
Absolutely. Sorry, I jacked you for.
No, 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 that was perfect, cause you had the opportunity to sit in on that meeting, so, so, yeah. Um, you know, Bill gave his little, it's Bill, uh, I think Extension is, is awfully, you know, busy. You know, Bill's starting his, his gardening programs and, um, and I think they need, uh, the way house to pay it in the afternoons, I don't think it's daily, but I do, I do think it's weekly. He did mention that if there was interest for an evening one, that he'd be willing to do a, an evening one as well. And it's kind of just for his, you know, over gardeners to kind of throw ideas and, uh, get some answers for either the, the group that's there or from Bill himself or, you know, and share some, some different collaborative ideas. Kerry's, you know, awfully busy, obviously, um, you know, so our state's attorney, she did help us out with, uh, find some medical marijuana, um, ordinances that we probably should need to take a look at. As we move towards that, um, either some sort of zoning towards that. Um, or in the meantime, in interim time, if we don't wanna, if we can't get the group together to approve something like that, we can put a moratorium on. On any type of facility until we get the zoning process in place for those. I do think that, you know, Ramsey County or the Devil's Lake area has been selected as one of the places within the state for, uh, distribution. And, you know, we should probably have something in place for, for both that and for the growth facility, just in case, there's gonna be two growth facilities. And I know there's former Devil's Lake residents that have been doing this within the Colorado area, um, medical marijuana, that would like to come back. They have four years of experience out there and doing the same type of things that was approved through, uh, through the, you know, two years ago. And, uh, would like to come back closer home, so.
Quick question, uh, along those lines, just popped into my head, do we have a list of all of the planning and zoning? Chairman and woman for the townships that retain their own planning and zoning, and have a past planning and zoning plan? Just, my thought process is, is we're gonna go through the work of doing planning and zoning for this.
Yeah.
But we've only got half of the townships.
Right.
So the other half of the townships will have absolutely no coverage, and if something permits to get in, you can't pass something as, you know, your grandfather at that point. So it might be prudent to try to get some type of a email list together, or a call sheet, or whatever, and try to get.
For their benefit.
A quick informational session and say, hey, the county's looking at, you're either putting these into guidelines in place or a moratorium, maybe as a township, you wouldn't want to do that at the same time.
Sure.
So that we can all get on the same page on it, so that way all of a sudden it doesn't all of a sudden go, oh, well, craps, we didn't even know this was coming. Uh, I'm, I'm not trying to add to the workload or anything, but I, I just think it would be maybe a prudent thing that, so we're all on the same page, so.
Yeah, we have the ordinance in place, and then show it to the township and see if they'll sign off.
Yeah, something like that. So. Yeah, may, may, maybe if we get our ducks in a row first, and then we can give it to them, but just, just so we know what's going on. Where they know what's going on at that level.
Cause Creole, Bop, they grow, they have their own, you know.
Yeah, South Midimack and.
The ones around here.
Yeah, then there's a couple up in the north.
These are excluded.
So. We should do that.
Yeah.
Look, townships want to sign off on it, but they're not much of a, you know.
I just introduced them.
Yes.
I just, um, Greg Westland, the, he's gonna be speaking at Rotary on this subject. Um, um, the distribution and what it's doing for our state, uh, May ninth at Rotary, at noon. I'm sure Amy would be welcome if you'd like to come, Westland.
Where do they have that?
That's at the Ranch at noon.
Ranch.
Well, the city has started balloting on that too, I think.
Yeah, they're working on it right, yeah, they were setting the guidelines for how they were gonna treat it away from school zones and, uh, for the dispensaries and things of the future.
Similar to the alcohol and.
Right.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it's gonna come right from the, the state health department.
Yeah.
And their guidelines say, so.
For the growth facilities especially, I think, yeah. What did they say there was, cause the deadline for putting in a permit for one of the growth facilities, I think, was not that long ago, but this was, was it?
Four nineteen.
I was gonna say.
One day before four thirty.
Yeah. Was it, there was something like ninety, ninety-one or something like that?
Uh, wow.
Yeah, and, and with a, maybe it was eighty something.
Non-state.
Non-renewable.
It was a five thousand dollar non-refundable for the whole state, so they just cashed three hundred thousand dollars plus worth of checks, just so people want to do. I don't know if that was the dispensaries or the grows, I can't remember, maybe that was combined. I can't recall, but, and they don't release any of that information, so you still have no idea where they're gonna possibly sit, there could be. Six people in Ramsey County that are looking at it now, and we just don't have a clue.
There's only gonna be two in the whole state there.
Two in the whole state. And then, and then eight dispensaries within those.
But, but there was, there was no guidance issued with respect to where the two growth facilities would be in the state, that's correct, right?
No, they're keeping that, they, they're essentially keeping it quiet, other than to say that they won't. How my understanding, and I might be wrong, cause there was, Morton County had a permit for a growth facility come before their planning and zoning, and they denied it. Now, the, apparently it's, it's in the state regs that they will not award that growth facility to the, uh, permit applicant. Until they have all of their local zoning permitting and everything done, so they guarantee they have that spot lined up. But they still have a pool of applicants essentially in, uh.
That makes sense.
But they have to get everything essentially, all their ducks in a row, and then the state will say, okay, well, you had fifty applicants and, and seven of them got all their ducks in a row. So then they'll, I don't know how they pick from there, they pick two of the applicants.
Gotcha.
I don't know, again, I don't know if that list was all dispensaries plus grows or what, but it's, there's interest, there's no doubt about that, it'll be interesting to see where they're gonna set out when it's all said and done. Yeah, so. Interesting.
Chamber meeting, uh, what was that, a week ago?
About, yeah, I think it was a week ago.
Week ago, Paula, and the brewer, busy as ever, so. Coffee and collaborations, that's a good program, I wish it would fit into my schedule a little better, cause they have a lot of great information that they. They try to present to chamber members and, um. But it's gonna be another busy summer in the community of Devil's Lake and for the chamber, so. Fashion tournaments, Devil's Run, and Crazy Days, and Rib Fest, and all that kind of good stuff, so.
I'm kind of excited, I'm hoping we're unplanned by Devil's Joint Act, because the drive-in will be a slinking event at this year's chamber.
Is that one of your favorites, Ed?
It's not bad.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, I did have the opportunity, I'm on the state ANS committee, Aquatic Nuisance Species. Uh, they have their, the old needs twice a year going on a business market. We do have a full-time ANS coordinator at Game and Fish. And Jessica Hall is her name, and she's trying to rewrite their, their, their plan. And take them, take some public comments on aquatic nuisance plants and, and prevention. And so we can have that done prior to the legislative session, in case there's additional funding needs that, that organization would need for the help of. Reduction of the spread of that, and, um, I should have mentioned this, Alvin Ed and Susie were still here, but. I think the joint board would like to help out with, whether it be signage or, um, public information around our, our community, around our lake, and how to prevent the spread of aquatic nuisance. And I don't know if anybody happened to catch the Northland Outdoors segment on Saturday night. But they had a, a segment on Malax Lake in Minnesota that has, uh. Catch and release, uh, program for their walleye fishery. And that's kind of what they grew up being known as. It was a premier walleye fishery in the upper Midwest, and, and now you have a catch and release program because their walleye fishery has taken a, taken a slump, and they're not sure really why. Uh, they had a lot of, of, of.
Theories?
Well, influences that, that could have affected it, they had the, the introduction of, of zebra muscle, which is, uh, you know, it's a bottom feeder that filters water. Uh, that and the aquago muscle, um, avoid catch, ready, hard surface. And the, uh, the filter water, the bottom leader, they per muscle. And, and Lake Michigan has been decimated with it, uh, not only zebra muscle, but the aquago muscle, which can survive at deeper depths. But, and they're estimating that Lake Michigan water is, um, filtered every four to six days. Now imagine the amount of water in Lake Michigan that can be, the entire lake can be filtered in three to six, four to six days. And, and one muscle can do a liter, imagine how many liters, how many muscles there is within that body of water. I, I know the Red River, they've seen some, uh, zebra mussels down there. But Malax Lake, they had, uh, not only did they have zebra mussels, but they had the spiny, or spiny water flea, and the Eurasian male foal. So they had kind of a, a combination of, of aquatic nuisance species that came in. About the same time, they had a, their tribal governments had taken them to court and were granted permission to, uh, net or fishing within the lake. And so that, that probably had an effect on it, and, uh, there, you know. I can't imagine having a walleye fishery like we have in Devil's Lake and then have a catch and release program. You know, like they interviewed one of the resort owners or bait shop owners, and they said, you know, you can come up here and catch all the walleye you want. It's catch and release, but you'll have to go to a restaurant for your walleye again. And so, but it's really taken a hard hit on their economy and their, um, property values around their lakeshore. You know, and they, they have a lake, bulk of size of Devil's Lake, um, they're about a hundred and forty thousand acres, uh, we're about a hundred and sixty-five currently, so. In right in that neighborhood that, you know, are very similar in size, but, uh, you know, so we need to try to do everything we possibly can to try to keep those. Aquatic nuisance species out of Devil's Lake, so it was a, it was an interesting meeting. Sometimes we don't always agree with their philosophies on how to go about that. You know, sometimes they, we feel that they have a laxadaisical approach to it, that, oh, it's gonna get here eventually. Let's not, or spend our, our time, spending or, or money worrying about this thing and trying to prevent it. But I, I, I think it can be, you know, if we can prevent it for ten, twenty years, um, you know, maybe there'd be something that could, you come up with that could eradicate these, uh. Cause right now, other than sterilization of the lake, it's, you know, zebra mussels can't be killed, and they're up in Lake Winnipeg, and they're just. Well, not something there.
Now they're being.
Yeah.
And if we, we gotta protect our fishery, yeah.
Uh, the joint board, we're gonna have our end water tour the twentieth of June, I think it's the third Wednesday. If anybody's interested, we always pick up the cost for any electric officials, um, whether it be a, a. Housing commissioner, a city commissioner, uh, water board member, legislative representative.
What, what's your route this year?
I think we're gonna go over east. Nelson County had a, a very, a project that's taken, I don't know, twenty years to complete, uh, their Michigan spillway.
Oh, yeah.
Their enterprise drainage system. They're, they're currently allowed to pump fifty CFS into the Forest River, and it's going east, um, into Walsh County. But it's taken some water out of that lake, the red and the two slew, that's north of the border, spread over to north of Michigan. And, you know, back in the, the nineties, that was, you know, what, two hundred and forty acres of water, it's over twenty-two thousand at its peak. Uh, so they had a lot of water issues over there, but they're fully gaining some ground back, and, uh, you know, between the, the drier years and the pumping capabilities, they've actually. Been able to reclaim some land over there and, you know, make some headway on that. You know, how, what was it, four or five years ago, we went down that Nelson County twenty-two? Um, and we had to have a shore escort for us because it was one-way in traffic. We didn't want to meet anybody, so they blocked off the road on the south end, we came in from the north and went south, highway two, but it was. And it was one-way road at that time, so. And then, well, I think we're gonna have, uh, hit East Bay Resort with Bill Wood over there, and you can see his new facility, probably have lunch there. And, um, you can see the, uh, East End Elephant and Control Star Trek column, uh, those are always pretty popular, uh, tour destinations, a lot of interest in those and.
Yeah, that's, when I went to, uh, we, you're up there.
Yeah.
Going over east, and I was interested in seeing that first station.
It, it, it really is tough for me to come up with, with new tour routes and ideas and, and things like that, because. To me, it's, it's all a hat, and, and, you know, you've seen it so many times, you've had to do the Chevy Chase dot at the Grand Canyon and, and that kind of thing, and, and keep on going, but. You know, for people that haven't never seen those type of structures or, or that route, you know, it can be fairly interesting, and very educational, so. And that's tried to, one of the things I would try to do is, is educate as many people as possible. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mark. Well, basically, I've got more information on the law enforcement center today, we talked about, uh, getting somebody in here from the state to. Straighten up the last few little bumps we have, and, uh, law enforcement centers coming around, they move some people around, and things are going forward. That's the only information I have today.
Okay. Oops.
Uh, before I forget, the Heritage Center is gonna pursue a grant to pay for, I think, eighty percent of the cost of the roof. Uh, which means that twenty percent of the cost will, I think, be borne by some entity. Um, we were thinking about potentially doing a fundraiser for some of that, uh, but we were, I was wondering if, if this commission would. Be willing to, to either match the, the dollars raised or, or to help offset some of that twenty percent of the cost of a, of a roof repair.
Have you got any estimates?
No, cause the, the grant will pay for, I think, all of it, right?
Well, yeah, so what, you're talking about one Mary Monday's pretty good, yeah.
Nobody's looked at the roof. Yeah, nobody that has looked at the roof.
No, so, so I can't tell you what twenty percent of the cost will be, but, but it. The fact that we can get it done for eighty percent somebody else's dollar, I think is a.
A couple meetings ago, we talked about, when they were at the Hosh, that does roof work, and now I heard on the radio with Mike Gilbertson. That does rubber roofing, and he's local, uh, I'd like, before you move forward, let's find out what's gonna cost. I don't think the whole roof needs to be done, and I, I don't know, but.
I think Mary will be pursuing a bid for her grant, so we can probably get a cost for that.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, she'll be able to document that anyway, so, yeah, I think we had discussed that to him, and I just forgot that she was gonna.
If I would move forward and have one of the gentlemen go up and look at it, maybe it's only a few hundred dollars to fix it, I don't know.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be far more than that, but, yeah, well.
Have you looked at it, Paul?
No, but I mean, we, we've seen the destruction that's done to the interior of the building that.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah, it's inside, but somebody should look at the roof where the water's coming in, I guess.
Yeah, and it's, it's a.
I don't plan on going up there.
It's a very old building, but I, I.
Well, it's an old building.
Yeah, I've seen what a hundred dollars fixes, and I think it's a little more than that, but, um.
Somebody should look.
You might.
You should have somebody that's professional in this fixing roofs, look at it, and they're, oh, oh, both independent.
Well, the, the estimate last year, just to do the, the glue down and whatever they call it, that didn't even have the guarantee, was what, thirteen thousand?
Yeah, but I, I, I'm sure Mary needs a bid for her grant, so we can, we can definitely get to, uh.
I, I don't, yeah, I guess, speaking of Lucas's question, I guess.
Alan, did you have that?
I did, but I don't know, that sounds right though.
Yeah, it was thirteen and change, if I remember right. I, I mean, at that point in time, we weren't in opposition to trying to help.
Right.
It's just a matter of figuring out how much we're gonna be buying out here, I mean, cause you know, twenty percent of a hundred thousand or something is a lot different than twenty percent of ten thousand.
Right.
So if we got a estimate, I don't think there's any, any problem, you know, they have.
I'd just like to have somebody go up and look, other than our last, who was it?
Uh, I think Tacto.
Tacto, no, Tacto, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I just need to be a little extra work.
Yeah, there's, there's that other, uh.
The right time of the year to pitch it up, so that's for sure.
There's that other group out of, uh. Tone of Grand Forks that, that's all working on the whole set of the roof. Can we look here? But there, there's a couple different, different companies.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll look into that, I just wanted to, because that, that was between the last.
No, I don't.
Now I just wanted to bring it up.
Let's just give it to her.
Yeah.
I have been in the building, but we're doing a lot of damage.
Do you want to see pictures? Sure, I'll find the pictures as well, while I finish talking about my portfolio, um. So, that was Jackie that sent those pictures, right?
Or Gavin.
No.
Yeah, probably was Jackie.
Before she left.
Is the museum currently open?
It's open to any tour groups who want to utilize it.
But it's not.
Open to the public, uh, no, it, it has to be locked, cause we don't have any employees anymore, full-time, it's all volunteer. But the volunteers that have, have done it have taken, I think, what, like four or five tour groups to already?
The school groups are kind of heavy right now.
And Dan Dosh would be a good one to identify where the leak is, cause Dan knows where the leak is. And what's causing it. Um, Kevin, were you ever a fix?
I was. I think the worst of it is coming from, it looks like a three-inch sewer line where the water flows through and out, but the rate of that elbow is, it looks like a froze or something, leaks there.
Crack, yeah.
I think that's the bulk of the water myself.
That's what we seen a year ago.
A year ago, yeah.
Yeah, I'm all the favor effects, I do that. We'll take care of the twenty percent. Well, that's the case on the graph. Yeah, we'll get the fix from that.
Yeah, we gotta make sure we got, we got a good fix.
I'll, I'll find, I'll find this and show it to you later.
I know Mike Gilbertson, yeah, he's advertised under Angel, so he must want to work, so, I mean, I'm not sure he's that good, but I think. I know Mike Gilbertson, yeah, he's advertised under eight, so he must wanna work, so, I mean, I'm not sure he's that good, but I think, I gotta like. Yep. Yep.
Um, the other thing, the Home Rule Charter Committee, I thought I'd forgotten on our next meeting, is.
Next week.
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at one-thirty. Um, and we finished an initial draft of a Home Rule Charter, uh, spent the last meeting, uh, carrying it down and refining it, make sure that the language is as concise and clear as it can be, uh, to make sure that it's internally consens- uh, consistent, uh, and to ensure that the scope of the document, uh, is in line with what the members of the committee feel appropriate for this county. Uh, so I think that's going well. The library received two proposals for the outdoor leading garden. We decided that we were gonna go, uh, with kind of a hybrid approach between both, uh, proposals, because we liked some of what was in both. So I'll let you know, uh, once we've picked the final proposal, and then just to remind everyone, the reason that we went back to the drawing board, as far as that is concerned, is, we were concerned about the scale of what we had initially designed, that it would be a little too cramped, so we decided to go back and redesign it, try to make, you know, more spacious. So once, once we've got final drawings for that, I'd be happy to bring them and show you and get your thoughts as well. Uh, that will be entirely paid for through private donation, is, is the intention. So, we'll be doing a big fundraiser, I'm sure, at the end of the year, so if you or your business or your friends wanna memorialize, uh, a loved one or, or your business or whatever else it is, and, uh, support reading in our community, learning in our community, it'd be a good way to go.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Ed? Social Service, we got your name, do you wanna run there?
I'm ready to say it, but, but we're just waiting for you to add from the past month there. Anything you can do and get there.
Jail. We're still on a closure notice and, uh, encouraging state inspectors to come up, I got a hold of them yesterday, just through the, uh, coordinator. And, uh, nothing like expecting my phone call, the second ring, I think, you picked it up. So I didn't think it'd be that simple to get a hold of them. So the talkover was with the boss, Mr. Redmond, and, uh, trying to set up a date to get up here, spend some time at the jail, go oversee some of the improvements and some of these things that we need to correct on the jail standards. Here comes off this coordination list, but we're finished eight months of being on that. We have four more months to get this aligned, so we can get off that closure notice. We had a good conversation, uh, and there's some blowback coming from our administration at the jail that don't feel they need to have the state inspectors around, but, uh, I guess they need to accept the fact that, uh, they're the ones that are gonna keep us open if, uh, we wanna have jail in those counties, so I guess we better jump through their hoops, and I guess we better line up to do it. So, um, I haven't talked to Rob Johnson yet this morning, and it was late yesterday afternoon, I got a hold of him, so. But he's very receptive of coming up, so, I think it'd be a big plus and everything up there at the jail. At our last meeting, board meeting, Tyler County got a real problem with this mill levy, the one they only donate their, put forth for the jail operation. So I don't know where that's gonna go, uh, we might be looking at, point four coming to be involved in the future of the city, so. But if that's their choice, that's, I guess, all right, that whatever they wanna do, that's their call.
What would be their alternative for a, a jail overall?
Oh, for a county, I guess.
Yeah, they're supposed to go rugby if they have to.
And they'd have to look at other communication also with nine-one-one.
Sure.
Won't be allowed to use that either, so. But, let's talk about, like, maybe these are talks, and I thought the last meeting we had got a little contentious, I guess, but, uh. But they, uh, you see, they're bandwagon, I guess, so. I'd try to compare it to social service, why not, you know, they're out.
Yeah, I, I was able to attend the last meeting, which was kind of informative, first time I had able to sit in a law enforcement center. It sounded to me like they kinda wanna figure out if there's a way they could break down the total costs by percentage of usage, usage per county, which is really, really difficult, and you've got all those bundled costs stuck in there, like how you pay the nine-one-one operators here versus there versus, I mean, it's, it's not impossible, but it's real doggone hard.
And you don't know what the incarceration number's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and what it comes down to is, I, I think that the point was made, and it's probably pretty, pretty, uh, you know, prudent to that, the total cost of running the jail, I can't remember the total budget, it's something like two and a half, three million something like that. And the mill levy portion of it only funds a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that, maybe, total? So, I mean, you're talking about problems with probably, like, three percent of the total or five percent of the total budget, so. It, it sounded to me like they, they just wanted to take a look at it, hopefully they, they don't get too wrapped up about it, and if there's any way we can look at those numbers. But, so we're talking about moving forward, yes. The other thing I was gonna say that, I think that needs to be noted, is that, uh, on the closure notice, at the beginning of the closure notice, there was what, a hundred and eight different things?
Jail standards.
Jail standards that we had an deficiency at, we fixed a hundred and two of them. So.
But they want a hundred and eight.
But they want a hundred and eight, so the progress has been made.
He brought that up yesterday.
Yes, yes, of course, but those last six are, are tough to get, but that's why I think, I, I think you guys are on the right track in bringing in somebody that has that experience to basically audit the operations and say, this is how you can fix those last six that you had done. So, we're that, we're that, I think we're that close, it's just a matter of getting those last few things in line and, so.
But it's the E C we have to work for.
Yeah, it's probably single.
E O C, they're gonna tell us whether we stay open or not, so we gotta work through them, and then you gotta work people to, you know, follow the rules, I mean, that's what you have to do, I mean, that's. That's our government work, right, Kevin?
Really, imagine if other jails are in the same situation?
Yeah, there is, he's on his way to Cavalier today, he might be stopping at the jail, so, you gotta go up there and do an audit, so.
I think essentially every jail in the state, every jail in the state had this.
Yeah, it, it sounds as though the state kinda changed how they were gonna start looking at how the standards were gonna be set, and all of a sudden, they kinda snapped in on everybody, and we're all on the same boat, but, like, the, the main point is, progress has been made, all kind of progress has been made.
Progress has been made, absolutely.
Just those last few things we gotta get done are tough things to get done, and we got some time to get them done, but I think the, the corrective steps are taken. Bringing in somebody that's gonna be the one that's gonna say, this thing needs to be lifted.
Yes.
Is, is the correct way to do it, even if there's gonna be a little bit of, you know, hard feelings, I guess, but.
One of my other fears is Mr. Redmond retires at the end of this month.
Yeah.
So I just seem to be that closure notice, I don't know, he's gonna step into that position, that's gonna be something that, I don't know, it's gonna be, I don't know. That's one of my concerns, that's all I have. We don't need one until us. Back third Wednesday, I guess.
Yep. Okay, is that everything you have for me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I guess, I'll, I'll try to move on to something quick, uh, the only, the only note I would have for social services is we had a pretty good discussion at our last social services board meeting about, uh, delivery of services, uh, and how, oh, uh, Senate Bill twenty-two oh-six, when it passed, it had the funding mechanism in there for the state to take over the funding source, but it also had a review of how the services are delivered and trying to find efficiencies and all that, and there's gonna be a lot of changes over the next three or four biennium in how social services are delivered, how the state is set up to deliver human services and social services, how the counties are going to be, I, I guess, expected to work together to a point. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of change that we're gonna see over the next, you know, four to five to six years. It's gonna take multiple, multiple bienniums to get it done, so, uh, that, that's, that's kind of an interesting note.
Just one thing to add on that, Adam, is, you know, when they passed twenty-two oh-six, and Dennis Johnson asked me, and said, well, Ed, what do you wanna do with the county employees? I said, leave them with the county, I said, the state has enough, and the union services department of employees, I said, leave them with the counties. The counties are doing a good job of taking care of their employees, and that's what they did, and that's what we need to do in the future, is keep employees under us. You know, don't let the state step in, no matter who sits in these chairs, don't let the state step in and take over the employees, because they're gonna lose our local control. And if we can take care of the employees, then the counties will have their own local control on that situation in that department, I think that's just huge.
Well, and in all honesty, I think in the discussion we've had at, at the board level there, as well as the meetings I've sat in, I think the state, you know, Chris Jones is new to it, you know, he came from the private sector and in public. I think he's, uh, and I can't speak for his mindset, but it, it seems to be that everyone that I've talked to and listened to seems to say that the counties are doing a good job of delivering services. Some of them maybe have, uh, not enough workload, but that is something that can easily be remedied by maybe working together and, and sharing staff or something to that nature. But the county's social service delivery system, the overhead, is actually far less than how the state is delivering their human services. So we're doing a good job of what we're doing, there's always ways we can find more efficiencies. But at the county level, it seems to be working pretty well, so I, I, I'm hopeful that that's what they're gonna say, is, is the county keeps the employees, and let's keep working for them.
I'm sure they'll do it for the next biennium, I don't think there's any questions, don't do that, they won't make a lot of changes, I, I don't think they've come up with any solutions to try to combine things, but.
Yeah.
But I think in two more years, then you're gonna see a lot of that combined, but there's a thousand social service employees that the counties employ, I don't have to call them, there's a large number. And, uh, some of the leadership down there was just scared that, they didn't know what it meant with another thousand employees under the state umbrella, you know, and. So that, that's, is that, don't, we wanna give up our employees, we'll, the county will take care of them.
Yeah, and on this, uh, related note, there's a lot of things going on in the human services subcommittees and everything that's going on in the interim, where they're, they're talking about delivery of services and how the state probably has had too much of a law, a view of, uh, delivering services on the backside for recovery versus diversionary services and putting money into those kinda things and, and, and trying to help people on the initial addiction treatment services versus after they've been out for years and years and years, and then trying to help them. Uh, so, there's gonna be some change with that, hopefully in the nineteen session, trying to work things together, uh, I think Kathy Hogan is leading that committee, uh, so. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of moving parts going on right now, but, uh, it's gonna be really interesting to see, uh, how the delivery of, of social services works statewide and how the system interconnects and, and kinda the synergies that are found, uh, going forward. I think the one thing that's always interesting, and it's a little, like, to digress slightly, is that during, I think it was like nineteen-eighteen or something like that, during that session, social services were pushed to the townships a long time. So there was a two-year biennium in there where the townships ran the social services.
There's a lot of local control, man.
Yeah, there's a lot, that's, that's, do you imagine if the townships now had to try to figure out a mill levy to run social services? But it was, I just, I always find that to be an interesting point. Uh, county housing authority, uh, some big changes going on, I mean, I shouldn't say big changes, but changes are going on there, um, you know. I don't, I don't know if, if the commission as a whole, maybe I haven't done a good job of explaining all the things that happened there, but there's public housing as well as section eight. Public housing is, uh, the buildings we own in Ramsey County, in the city of Devil's Lake. Section eight is a voucher system. And we have helped run the voucher system in Cavalier County, as well as Cooperstown Housing Authority for Griggs, uh, and Nelson at the same time, if I remember correctly. Yeah, because they have their own public housing, but we run their section eight. We're in the process of, they have their own boards in Cavalier County, as well as Cooperstown Housing Authority, of, those boards are going to dissolve, and then, instead of having to do three sets of paperwork, all those are gonna fold under the umbrella of our C H A of Ramsey County, and then we're going to add a board member from Cooperstown Housing Authority, as well as one from Cavalier, is gonna come down. So our board's gonna grow from five to seven, uh, and then we're still gonna have the same public housing portfolio, but we're gonna roll in all those section eight vouchers that we control in the other counties and run them as one big unit. It's gonna drive efficiency with, from the paperwork standpoint, as well as allow us to more easily utilize the vouchers into Ramsey County as well as out, because you gotta pour it in and pour it out, and it becomes a huge mess running things around. It's, it's a push, uh, to try to centralize things a little bit more, because we're already doing the work.
You see the pressure on the state?
I, I don't think it's the state, no, it's more from the local, we're making the decision that it, it, it'll just make things more efficient for our staff. Instead of having to do three sets of paperwork, you do one set of paperwork. Uh, we're already doing the work and porting vouchers in and out to make it work anyway, so why not just run a one-on-one centralized location? It's kind of the thought process, and, and five, uh, the five, uh, board members are still, five of the seven are still gonna be Ramsey County-centric, the two other ones, so we're still gonna, you know.
Were they just gonna come at large then, or the other two board members?
Uh, I, I think how they're gonna be set is, the, the, right now, the Cavalier County Housing Authority is essentially, their board is their county commission. So my, my thought guess would be, is their county commission is going to basically appoint somebody, whether it's one of their commissioners or somebody from, you know, no different than how we would appoint somebody at large to come in. And, uh, Cooperstown is, uh, I believe it's, I can't remember, I think their city technically is their.
Oh, really?
Oversees their housing authority, so they're going to appoint either a member or a member at large from the community or within the scope of, you know. So they'll have a body that's going to appoint into the board, uh, it won't be just, hey, we gotta start making phone calls and find somebody, I don't think, so. So there's a mechanism to make it work, uh, and they've signed off in both places to make this work, uh, they're on board with it, so. Hopefully it'll make things a little bit more streamlined, but that's kind of a big change comparatively to how we have been doing business. Uh, but seems to be going smoothly so far. Forward Devil's Lake, uh, executive director search, uh, I was able to sit in on two, uh, interviews last week for finalists. Uh, we had a recommendation, uh, from the committee at that point to, uh, make an offer to one of the finalists. Uh, that offer was extended and accepted, uh, but it hasn't been approved by the full exec board yet, uh, which, uh, we will have that discussion at our executive board meeting tomorrow morning at ten AM, so hopefully tomorrow, uh, I'm not gonna put any names out there yet, obviously, until we have an accepted offer by the exec committee. Uh, but we had very, two very good applicants, uh, that were finalists that interviewed with us, uh, both interviewed very well. And I think the, uh, the individual we've extended the offer to is, is going to be a, a, a positive. I was very impressed with both interviews, but, uh, this, this individual was very good, so. Hopefully, uh, everything goes smoothly tomorrow at the meeting and, uh, and it works well, and we'll hopefully by tomorrow have, uh, an accepted offer from the exec committee for the exec director, and we can move forward, so.
You think there'll be an offer made tomorrow?
The offer was already extended from the search committee, it just has to be, the accepted offer by that individual has to be approved by the exec committee as a whole. Uh, and I don't foresee why we wouldn't, but, uh, you know, that's just the finalization of, uh, of what occurred, basically.
So they moved it up a month, and they just talked at our meeting, we added the city, they weren't gonna do, I mean, one tell a few, or?
Well, we were hoping to have something, uh, lined by the first of June, yeah, uh, the process was gonna be in May, basically, trying to get it all finalized, and it actually came together fairly quickly comparatively, we wanted a little bit of a timeline, just in case we couldn't get, you know, uh, interviews and everything done in time.
James, something where they have that joint powers, and that's somebody working on that, did you have Kerry working on our end?
Not yet, the city is finishing their joint powers, we up, uh, to change everything to kind of reflect what the city and Forward Devil's Lake wanted to do. My thought process was, was once the city gets done with their re-up, then we can kinda take theirs as a, as a boilerplate blueprint, bring it back, Kerry can then go through it and say, we don't need this, we don't need this, we don't need this, and kind of make it function for the county before it knows. Uh, we've never had a standing agreement, so I guess I'm not in any hurry to, you know, it doesn't have to be done yesterday type of thing, but it would be prudent before, you know, within the next one, a little while, Kerry get one done, so.
You feel that it's gonna be more monetary value put into it, or?
At this point, no, I don't think so. I, I think the thought process is, um, get, get the executive director on board, get the individual, uh, on the ground. And then, uh, you know, we haven't even, you know, obviously we're running under budget for the year since we, you know, five months, four months, yeah, five months, almost, without an executive director, so we haven't even. we haven't even asked for mail levies yet from either entity, 'cause we haven't had to. We've got plenty of funding up to this point. So, um.
I'll get that director on board now.
Yeah.
Third box.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, and, uh, you know, obviously from the meeting we had, joint meeting we had, we're gonna really focus on that primary sector work. Those, moving some of the, uh, those things that maybe will work better with retail for the chamber, I think is gonna be really beneficial. I, I really think we're gonna, we have a good mindset and a good direction to move in. It's just a matter of, you know, getting the director on board and then as, as an exec board, we need to hold that director's feet to the fire and say, you need to get out there and work. You know, you really need to. And, and not even, not even from that aspect, more from the aspect of we need to really keep that scope, you know, instead of saying we're gonna do this, 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 this. Hey, this is, this is what we're shooting for. These one or two goals or three goals or whatever, set those strategic goals and then say, let's go T one. So we'll see where we're gonna go for it, but I, I'm, I'm a positive mind that we're, we're moving in the right direction. So, uh, we'll, we'll see how everything goes tomorrow. The only other thing I was gonna make mention of, and it's, it's not, it's neither here nor there for today, but, uh, I'm sure everybody saw the governor's budget blueprint came out. He's looking at, uh, ten percent, ten percent reduction baseline plus for the large, large, uh, agencies, five percent for the smalls. As well as five percent reduction in F T Es and a possible additional three percent. So something to think about. We just got through the extension already, having to cut to the bone, and they're gonna have to probably find more savings. So that's gonna fall back on us again, I'm sure. So it'll be kinda interesting to see how the nineteen session's gonna roll out, but just, just a thought process to kinda get our heads in the game. When we start budgeting here shortly, uh, we're certainly gonna vote nineteen already, so.
Be careful.
One other thing, uh, that I forgot to mention was, uh, hold that advisory meeting, uh, back in.
Oh, yeah.
I know the county has a representative on that. Uh, the committee decided to stay with the forty-eight elevation as a goal for this season with pumps. And at that time, if we reach that goal, then to re-keep being median and there, there's a lot of, of, uh, issues downstream, uh, with water quality, water quantity, different things like that. I know Minnesota, Manitoba had a lot of concerns over, uh, the quality of our water. As we become lower, the water quality may be, be lesser quality. And I think a lot of it has to do with the low flows in the, both Red and Cheyenne. Uh, when those have zero or no flows in them and all we're putting in is Devil's Lake water. What we're mixing with on those rivers is, um, not real good high-quality water. Um, so we have less and less to blend with. And so, you know, when we have no flows in the Cheyenne or low flows in the Red, then it's, it comes up as a, as an issue where you have to stay within those constraints, both in the Lower Cheyenne and the, and the Red River, and then at the border crossing, there's a, another threshold to, to follow. So, um, but that's, that's where that, that committee ended up, you know, and again, it's just an advisory committee. I remind people that it has, um, you know, no bearing on, on what the, the state decides to do. Um, you know, they take it into consideration, obviously, otherwise they wanna hold the meetings, but, um, you know, ultimately it comes down to what the governor and the state water commission decides to do on Operation Daleworks.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I can't remember, what, what are we on record in? What have to go to forty-seven or forty-six?
Forty-six?
Forty-six. And the city is what?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. And, and obviously Mayor Johnson is actually the water commissioner for this area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go to forty-five. Well, the west side will go to forty-five. Yeah.
So.
But we kinda remain at that forty-six because of the.
Yeah.
Cut-off between Devil's Lake and Stomp.
Forty-six, a whole stomp away from Devil's Lake, I'm guessing.
And then after that, it's, it's out of our hands. Um, you know, we had a, a meeting that was called, um, with the Lake Region Anglers Association, kinda brought anglers, some resort owners, landowners in, in a play. And we had a good discussion about lake stabilization. You know, ultimately, the, the key to, to a really vibrant community would be to stabilize this lake. But, you know, trying to bring water in during dry periods is a difficult, if not impossible, scenario. You know, and that, and then, you know, we gotta get hung up on elevations, and I don't think that that's a real big concern. I think the big concern is where do you find the water to stabilize Devil's Lake? You know, obviously this lake has a huge history going up and down. Over the last four thousand years, you know, we've been drier and empty a lot more often than we've been where we're at currently, you know, in the overflowing stages. And so in order for that to happen, weather-wise, it has to stop raining. And when we stop raining, producers don't grow any. So, um, it's kind of a double-edged sword as far as once we get past the, the outlets and how far it goes down. But it, in, in the past, it has gone down, you know, in eighteen twenty-six, it was at a, a real record high, and then it slowly went down up until nineteen forty. And then it, you know, was at an all-time record low at, at that point at fourteen hundred feet, you know, about forty-nine feet lower than where we're at today. So if you can, you can only imagine that. And then, and that, at that point, from that point on, we, we steadily increased, but you know, and there's a lot of theories of, of do this, do that, bring water here, bring water there kinda thing. But I think the big thing is, is to, you know, if it was easy, it would've already been done. Um, but the other thing is, once you artificially bring water in and flood private property, then somewhere, somebody's gonna be compensated for that. And, and we started losing prop, private property in fourteen twenty-eight. So I think there's a, a, a lot of water left on this thing that's, we still have needed private property on, so.
That opens up a whole can.
It really does, but it, it was a, it was a good discussion with civil, um, but it, it's a discussion that we need to have, you know, if, you know, back in the seventies when the city had a private consultant come in, they said, you know, you stabilize this lake, find a way to, to bring the Garrison project to fruition and have lake stabilization. And, you know, this, we have the potential of being bigger than Detroit Lakes or some of the other big resort communities in Minnesota. It's not a matter of who comes in Devil's Lake, it's a matter of who we want to come in Devil's Lake at that point. Um, be, because, you know, there's some lake shore property in Minnesota at a thousand bucks a foot. We have a lot of future out in Devil's Lake. So, you know, and, and those are undeveloped lots, you know, a thousand bucks a foot for a lake shore property and, and, yeah, and that's, those would be undeveloped. If you could somehow stabilize this lake, I think that'd be a, a, a big, a, a big deal. You know, then you could have, you, you would know within a three to five foot fluctuation range where the lake would be at any certain time, you could develop. You could build roads, you could build developments, you could build without the, the threat of being miles away from the water or having the water flood you over it. Right? Like I said, if it was easy to fix, it would've been done years ago.
Yep.
It's always a problem.
But it's a very good discussion at both of those meetings and, uh, you know, Minnesota, Manitoba, it gotta crawl under my skin every once in a while, and I think they, they do it on purpose. And, you know, a couple of years back, they said they had no, had desire to tell North Dakota what, what they should set their wa, bodies of water at. And, but they certainly had an opinion this time around and, uh, and a lot of it focused on water quality. And, you know, Devil's Lake gets a lot of the blame for that. Um, but there's, you know, the guy from Fargo, he was, that was on that board, uh, committee, he said, he works for Fargo Public Works. He said there, they get most of their water from the Red River, except when the Red River's water quality is so poor, then they get it from Cheyenne, which is where Devil's Lake water is. And I said, well, hey, a minute. You're telling me that Devil's Lake water is pretty good, better than the Red River? Oh, yeah. He said, it is. I said, Minnesota, Manitoba, how do you guys explain that? You know, so, hey, it's, uh.
They call it muddy river.
Yeah, you know, so like I said, though, but when, when, when there's zero flows prior to Devil's Lake outlets operating in the Cheyenne and the Red River, we're actually improving the quality of that water that, that they're receiving downstream. So, and, and that's pretty much what, what a lot of the North Dakota people on that committee stated is that, you know, there have been times during the outlet operations that they were very thankful for the water that we, they did receive because it supplemented their, their water supply to their communities.
I think I went to the meeting, uh, it was right after I got in the commission, I believe it was, yeah, Pat, I think it was Pat Zabel at that point was the, with the administrative department, he said, we want as much Devil's Lake water as we can get our hands on, basically. Because we need it for the additional treatment facilities that we're gonna need, because until the Red River water supply project is done, they're sitting there going, we're gonna need water if the Red River starts to dry out.
Well, and, and we're part of their emergency drought, here at this plant.
We're essentially their backup right now until they get their actual backup that they want in place, so.
What's their expected completion date on that pipeline coming from Missouri to pass the deal?
Long time.
Coming here, you know, I don't.
I'm not sure, but they're, they had a meeting over at the city that I was able to attend partially, uh, but I thought they were talking, you know, thirty years.
Thirty? Well, I thought forty-two or that.
Well, you know, there's a, they have a lot of hurdles that they, they need to overcome. Um, and, and they're moving in, in the right direction.
Garrison version is, is kinda taking the lead.
That, that and the Lake Agency, um, committee, Red River Valley Water Supply Project, you know, they, they have a lot of.
State money, a problem.
And state money's gonna be an issue for them.
It's gonna be a local project.
Uh, they wanna keep the federal government out of it as much as possible, just, uh, alleviate some of the federal permitting issues that they have to go through. And, you know, but on the other hand, if they could utilize some of the existing federal infrastructure, place your Garrison, it would save them a lot of, a lot of money.
Yeah, they're essentially trying to come up with a good.
That won't happen.
Yeah. They're trying to come up with a good game plan, because the minute you start to pull surface water or use any of the federal facilities that's already available, you're gonna get tied up in court.
Right.
Missouri's gonna sue you.
Yeah.
'Cause they, their name just happens to be the river's name, and they wanna make sure they can hold onto their water or something.
Yeah, we bury that pipeline.
Yeah, there's, there's a reason they obviously whiskey's for drinking and water's for drinking.
Yeah.
It is the truth.
They would hardly get their diversion project under nobody for that pipeline.
Maybe. I, you know, but I think unfortunately, we're a, a society that, and we have great ideas, but we never fulfill them until they're, they're actually needed. Um, we, we wait around until the disaster hits, you know. Grand Forks is a perfect example of it.
Devil's Lake Lake is a perfect example.
Devil Lake.
Nothing but a double.
Right.
Bang on the door of town.
Yeah.
Then they put an outlet in. They gotta be a government that had the gall to step up and do it.
Right.
What they had in mind.
Over a million acre-feet of, of water's been pumped off since the pumps have started in two thousand and five. It works out at our current lake elevation of about five and a half feet of, of water. I, I like to tell people that it's just about double of what the, the volume of the lake was prior to nineteen ninety-three in the flooding survey. We're at about five hundred and eighty thousand acre-feet of water in the lake at that time. And, uh, so I, I think we're probably around that period where we've doubled the capacity or the volume of the lake that we pumped off. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have one really important request before we adjourn.
Oh, yes.
Uh, request is, can we get a picture taken before the next elections, that we actually got a picture of this commission? I, I should put it to you to schedule that.
That's a good point. We should have a picture.
That calendar?
Staring at that picture, I'm like, God, what have we been here two years and nobody's taken a picture?
We can figure something out. Candy and I will look at it. Yeah, hypothetically speaking, as long as nobody decides to write in and whoop us, we're gonna be here for a couple more years, at least.
Let's just do it in history, you know.
I can give an update on Nico. I don't know if anybody's heard, but, uh, Terry Traynor has been appointed to fill that position with Park Johnson.
So he's been hired for a whole time now?
Okay. Terry agreed to, to work for four years. You know, he's getting that, that age where he can retire, but he did agree to work for four years.
That's good. Good seamless transition then.
Also, I, I'm gonna try and run to get out of the, both of the chairs, just so everybody's aware of that. It's gonna need some travel, it's gonna need some.
For that board?
Yeah, for that board, yeah. By the October, I'll know for sure if I get on the board or not.
What do you, uh, what do you need, Alfred?
I'll let you know in September.
Just some parties, make some calls.
But it's gonna be, you need some travel, so.
Who votes on it, Ken? The whole?
Yours is like representatives or delegates, delegates or, that's who votes. Maybe you're a delegate. We have a delegate.
Yeah, we, we, we'll have one delegate at the, at, it'll be at the formal N D A C O meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
And like the engineers have two delegates, some like the reporters will have somebody, they have delegates and the auditors will have somebody.
Yeah, and then each county commission gets one delegate. So, yeah, we'll figure it out.
I might even come down for that.
Okay, any further business to come before we come?
Move to adjourn.
I'll be motion in a second. You're adjourned.